Oh, nothing, nothing at all.
Well, now I'll call the city council regular meeting to order for June twelfth. Please rise with the invocation and pledge of allegiance invocation. We give my deputy mayor Jim Bernard.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
May be seated. Madam clerk, feel please call a roll.
Yes, sir. Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember McCure.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. First up, we have. An event request, Walk for Hope, Enough is Enough. Do we have Raven with us tonight?
She did say she would be here, but I don't see her.
All right, we will skip past it. And if she shows up, you let me know. We'll come back to it. Item number five, we have the new APCC executive director introduction, Ms. Kamala Long. Do you want to come up and say a few words?
Okay.
Hi, everyone. So I wanted to just take this formal opportunity to introduce myself as the executive director for Avon Park Chamber of Commerce.
Welcome.
I'm fairly new to my position as in mid February. And since then, mid February to March, April, we have gone through a renovation of our building. It was a lot. We had electrical, AC, drywall, roof, capital investment of eighty thousand dollars from community investors. Did this wonderful renovation. This building was gifted to us by the city, and we're definitely grateful for that. But a minor update was done in nineteen eighty-eight and nothing since then. So as it is a significant structure in this historic district, it was worth the investment to update this building. It is my goal to have a welcome center as an entry point to our chamber. And our chamber office will be sort of our middle section and the back area of our chamber will be a business center with two offices, one of which will be rented for a pack and ship business. And again, as a service to the community, we will also have a fingerprint machine. The business center will have computers, a conference room, and the remaining office as rental options for the community. Again, we can do this as an hourly or weekly basis as needed. We believe like a remote worker or a business like a insurance or something like that would be a good asset for that. I know I've met each of you at different times, but I wanted to just formally introduce myself and to greet the city council and staff because I believe that we are partners in revitalizing Avon Park, the chamber, the city, the city manager, city staff, council, mayor, and the attorney. Got some empty buildings down there. We must all really work together to make a difference and increase opportunities to help level up Avon Park. I'd like to request that the city considers becoming a strong investment partner in the chamber to host events like a first responders breakfast, to move forward with the Don't Litter program through the Keep Avon Park Beautiful affiliate through Keep America Beautiful. We are already an affiliate. And I'd also like to consider a farmer's market for downtown Avon Park and Downhill Park. I have some interested parties in that, and so we could talk about that at another time, but I wanted to just, you know, put in a little teaser there. We are already a great team for the Christmas parade, and I think this year it will be a record year of making Avon Park a destination. My ask is that you each take a look at our website, apccfl.org, and select investment partner, which is our highest level, to belong to our chamber. The chamber cannot sustain itself without the investment of interested individuals. I do have a scripture I'd like to read, which is Isaiah forty-one thirteen. It was in my devotional this morning, and I thought, how apt. For I am the Lord your God, who takes hold of your right hand and says to you, do not fear, I will help you. And I believe that the Lord has brought me here for a time such as this, for a purpose such as now. And to make a difference, I need your help. So thank you, and I wish us continued success because I believe I look forward to a future that is going to be growing for Avon Park. Thanks.
Right on. Thank you very much.
I have one question, please, Ms. Long.
Yes, I actually did have in my notes, questions, comments.
Okay. You said you're running out of packing company in the back or something?
Parkland, pack and ship.
Is that where they can drop off packages and ship them and stuff?
Mm-hmm, similar to like an Ace pack and ship.
When does that start?
When does that start? So we are actually renovating that back office and we are ready to go, but until that office is renovated, we won't actually launch.
Okay, well, I've seen the rest of the office. It looks great. Great job.
Thank you. So any questions, comments?
I actually have a question.
Go ahead.
Yes, go ahead. The fingerprint machine that you're going to keep, who are you going to allow to use that? Are they going to be open to residents only, outside people?
It's Fieldprint. So you would go to Fieldprint, you would make an appointment, and we would just be hosting that service for the community.
Okay.
Again, my goal with the Avon Park Chamber of Commerce is to make it a destination, an open door policy where we have our doors open all the time, and it's for the community. I'd like to create a buzz. I'd like to create an opportunity for people to feel welcomed and come in, have a drink of water, a coffee at some point. We're going to have a coffee station as well.
Um, I don't know if you'd be interested, but the Highlands County Citrus Growers Association down in Sebring may donate the orange juice if you were interested in that.
Oh, absolutely.
And could you tell me that website again?
Our website?
Yes.
A P C C F L dot org.
Ms. Kamala, I have a question. The chambers of commerce, are they the office that helped, that helped bring businesses into the city? Or you just pretty much, that office helped business that is already established here in Avon Park?
That's a great question. So chambers have historically been a membership organization for businesses to network and engage with knowing each other, sharing services, and helping each other basically expand the services of their businesses. However, with a small rural town like Avon Park, that job is multifaceted. So we are also the voice of the community. We have voice of the businesses. And so, yes, we would be part of economic development. We would be part of communicating with the city staff when new businesses open, when they apply for licenses. Who are those people? So then I would reach out to them, speak with them about opportunities to join our chamber. Quite often, we get phone calls and visitors into the chamber asking for a location for a new business, you know, what building is available? Right now, and this is why I invited the city attorney to be part of this conversation too, is because we have a lot of buildings that are empty in Avon Park, and those owners aren't really forthcoming with selling or renting. They are using it as storage. That is a challenge for us. We also have a number of businesses that are one-story commercial that are being occupied by the owners as their residents, should not be so either. So there is a challenge. And so for us as the chamber, we're multifaceted. We have to be eyes and ears and investigate and be the voice for businesses and new businesses.
Okay. Any other questions for Kamala? Seeing none. Kamala?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor. Raven is arrived.
Okay, Ms. Jefferson. We'll go back to item number four. This will be an event request for Walk for Hope, Enough is Enough. This will be the Dream Foundation, Inc., Ms. Raven Jefferson, if you will, just give your address for the record.
First, my apologies for being late.
No problem.
My name is Raven Jefferson. The business address is two five two three U S twenty-seven South Suite two zero three.
All right. So we see you have an event request here. Looks like be for the twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Nine AM to twelve PM, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. So you see you got a road closure there, and you got the request for use of the park. Was there any other parts that you're requesting?
Um, no, not necessarily, because we're going to start at the Lee McWhite part, and then we're going to end at the Boys and Girls Club right here in Avon Park, and that's where everything will take place. That's where we'll have the different speakers and things of that nature.
Are you actually asking to shut down the park for your event exclusively, or are you just meeting there?
No.
Okay.
Doesn't need to be shut down.
All right. Do you have your insurance for the event?
I wasn't aware that I needed insurance.
Okay. The staff, you want to let her know what kind of insurance she needs?
I can send it to you in the morning. It's an event insurance, and it'll provide you what it needs to look like.
Okay.
So it's very similar to the last time when we were working on the.
Christmas event?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yep. Have you done an event in Avon Park before?
Not where I actually needed to like rent or kind of close off something, so.
Okay.
No.
Basically, that's the, you know, be a five oh one C three and have a insurance policy for the event. That's kind of the two main things.
Okay.
But beyond that, you can pretty much do whatever you like. Anything, do we want to go ahead and can we approve it?
Mayor.
While we're waiting on the insurance? Go ahead.
Um, Ms. Jefferson, what, what organizations have you gotten with and partnered with for this walk?
Um, so we're going to partner with the Sheriff's Department, the Boys and Girls Club, South Side Community Resources are the three organizations that's, well, four organizations that's putting this walk together.
Okay.
Um, Dream is just heading it because we did one last year and it was successful. So we, this year, we're bringing in other organizations to reach more of the community.
Okay. Um, have, have you contacted N double A C P?
And they're a part of it as well. I'm so sorry. Yes, they are a part of this as well.
Okay.
That's our only question.
That's it.
So Jerry, can we approve it pending the insurance or?
Yeah, the insurance and identification requirements have to be met. And so I thought you can approve it subject to those requirements.
Okay. Do you have any issue getting the insurance? Are you okay with that?
Yeah, that's no problem.
Okay. Is there any other questions?
I got, I got one.
Go ahead.
Have you got in contact with any of the churches?
A lot of churches are a part of this event as well. There's quite a few to actually go off by name, but we have a lot of the pastors that are reaching their congregation and going out in the community to, because we want to, we did it last year. We had about fifty people show up, so we just want to reach a more bigger crowd. So this year, we actually have different churches in Avon Park Sebring, actually just reaching different parts of the county though.
And how did you notify the churches?
Um, a lot of them are actually coming to these meetings. We've been having meetings leading up to the event. So they've been coming to the meetings, all giving ideas, suggestions, and how they can support the cause.
But was there any letters sent out to any churches?
Some of them have been contacted via, via phone or just word of mouth.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nobody for able to. I can, I'll just go ahead and make a motion to approve before.
Go ahead.
With the stipulation of the insurance.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I have a second. Go ahead.
We have a motion and a second. Any last questions? Please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Raven, thank you very much. All right. Item number six, this will be our consent agenda for city council special meeting, May sixteenth. This will be May twenty-second, city council special meeting, and May twenty-fifth as well. Do we have any questions or changes? If not, we'll be looking for a motion to approve consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, see second.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Item number seven, this will be a public hearing for the second reading of ordinance zero six dash twenty twenty-three and zero seven dash twenty twenty-three. Jeff just keeps getting better and better looking all the time.
Good evening. I'm Brenda Torres with the Central Florida Regional Planning Council, and here, we're here for the second reading on ordinance oh six twenty twenty-three and oh seven twenty twenty-three. And this is just the future land use change of county median density residential to city medium density residential and zoning of county R one A residential district to city R three high density multi-family residential. And that's just to facilitate future development of multi-family. And I stand to answer any questions, and then the applicant's also here.
Good. I'm going to go ahead and read in the record, please.
All right, go ahead, read the short title. It's an ordinance admitting the future land use map of City of Avon Park, Florida. I mean, one parcel of land consisting of plus or minus thirty-nine point six three acres, generally located south of Lake Glenada on the north side of Davis Citrus Road, address being thirty-five oh one Davis Citrus Road from the future land use of county medium density residential M D R to city medium density residential M D R. Transplanting sent amendment to the Ford Department of Economic Opportunity for notification purposes only, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. You have any preliminary questions? Madam staff, okay. All right. As I said, this will be a public hearing. So a public hearing for ordinance zero six dash twenty twenty-three is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this future land use change can now do so. Seeing no speakers, public hearing for ordinance zero six dash twenty twenty-three is now closed. Once again, I'll ask the council, we have any further questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion? Be a motion to approve ordinance zero six dash twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance zero six dash twenty twenty-three.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Ordinance zero seven dash twenty twenty-three.
It's an ordinance submitting official zoning map of the City of Avon Park, Florida, admitting one parcel of land consisting of plus or minus thirty-nine point six three acres, generally located south of Lake Glenada on the north side of Davis Citrus Road, address being thirty-five oh one Davis Citrus Road from a zoning of county R one A residential district to city R three high density multi-family residential, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for effective date.
All right, ordinance number oh seven dash twenty twenty-three, public hearing for this ordinance is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this zoning change can now do so. Once again, seeing no takers, public hearing for ordinance zero seven dash twenty twenty-three is now closed. Ask the council again, have any further questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance zero seven dash twenty twenty-three.
It's not good.
We have a motion and a second. Please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Item number eight, this will be the first reading for ordinance zero seven dash twenty twenty-three.
Zero eight, excuse me, zero eight. An ordinance of the City of Avon Park, Florida, admitting city code section two dash thirty-six to clarify the mayor's authority to sign resolutions and contracts approved by the city council and providing for clarifying the mayor's authority to issue or reject proclamations or one-time recognition periods for persons, groups, or events for their contributions to the city community, and establishing the city council's authority to approve annual recognition periods for persons, groups, or events by resolution, providing for codification and repeal conflicting codes, ordinances, resolutions, provide for severability, provide for effective date.
Okay. Jerry, you want to give us an overview of what this is?
Yes, just to clarify, we had pretty much done those things that are mentioned here, shooting from the hip. But I thought it was better, there does mention in there your code a little bit, but it does, just regarding signing ordinances, but I added resolutions, contracts, issues, proclamations, and recognition periods as, just to try and codify what we have been doing in the past.
Okay. So this would, you know, we routinely get asked for, you know, letters of support and things like that. This would right, allow me to issue those letters and things.
Right, those proclamations and letters of support are going to be approved by the mayor, but if somebody wants a, you know, the whatever day, then that's done by resolution by the council.
Yep. And of course, any council member that wants to bring up something can do so at a council meeting or.
Yes, yeah, that's right.
All right, any questions on ordinance number zero eight?
Question.
Go ahead.
Um, on A, where it say the mayor share review and have the prerogative to issue a proclamation or reject a request. So let me make sure I'm understanding. If someone put in a request, you going to be the only one to review and decide whether or not that the council, it comes before the council? Am I understanding that right?
That's right. That would be the mayor.
Okay, so I'm going to ask the mayor this question. Mayor, how would you decide which one to reject to come before the council and which one not?
Yeah, so they actually wouldn't go before the council.
Okay, none of them would.
Yeah, so what we're talking about is like probably two or three times a week, I'll get a certain organization or a business or something that'll ask me, hey, you know, we're applying for a grant or we're, you know, going to be, you know, asking for this zoning change in the county or something like that, you know, do you support this, you know, or can you give us a letter of support? Up until now, I really couldn't without taking it to the council first. And so usually by that time, it's too late or it's just, you know, so much of a hassle that they don't really want to do it, that sort of thing. So it's not generally for, you know, let's take Breast Cancer Awareness Month or something like that. That would all go before the council. This is more for the incidental one-time things. And it would be up to the mayor's prerogative. And, you know, you're, you're looking at me thinking that, you know, me and how would I decide, but it's more for every mayor after me as well. It's kind of the, it just puts all those, all those decisions in whoever's the mayor at the time's, you know, prerogative, basically.
Yeah, I understand it. I'm just not just looking at you. I'm, I know one day you, somebody's going to take your spot, just like somebody's going to take mine. But the point I'm trying to make is that how do we know that um, everybody's going to be treated fairly? I mean, it seems like to me it'll open up some complaints for the city. Is that, you know, you accepted him, but not his. And, and that's why I asked you the question. How do you, how do you determine which one you will and which one you won't?
Yep. I mean, it would be up to my own, my own morals and subjections.
Okay.
Yep. All right, any other questions on item number eight?
Yeah, can I, Jerry, please, on this, the way it is, when the mayor make a decision, we're still bringing it to council, right? So we can do it in a public.
Yeah, it'll be read. Yeah, it'll be done in public.
Yep. Any other?
So you, when you make the decision, mayor, it will be done in public.
Correct. It'll be read in public, that's, you know, publicly presented.
Yeah, it's always public record anyway, so it's
Oh, okay.
Forever accessible.
The council doesn't really vote on these proposals, correct?
No, generally speaking, that's like, I just simply mentioned, if you, if you felt like a future mayor, you know, abused it, then the council could just reverse this.
Right.
So, I mean, it's just.
I mean, there's something to be said about the liability as well. So if anything, you have the council as a whole votes to support a certain issue, and then there's a lawsuit that stems from that one issue. Now, the entire council is now open to be sued, whereas this case, it's just me, so. Well, congratulations to me.
I second that.
Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion for ordinance number zero eight dash twenty twenty-three?
I have a question.
Oh, you have a question in the audience?
Oh, sorry, didn't see you out there. Please come up to the podium. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Deborah Davis. My address is seven oh six West Winifred Street.
Yes, ma'am.
And to comment on what was just said, I'm trying to get an understanding also. So if you make the decision, there's really no need in bringing it to these people if you've already made the decision, right? I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, so you're not actually bringing it to the board. You're just simply saying this happened. You know, you're just reading it in the public, but you're not actually asking the board to vote on it.
That's what I'm saying, because you've already made the decision.
Correct.
So the one person makes the decision.
Correct.
Okay.
Have you ever seen any of the proclamations that we've done before?
Yeah, I've seen some, but I'm, I didn't agree with those either, but I mean, it's just me, but I'm just saying.
What I'm saying is it's generally a formality. It's not as if we're changing the course of the town to support this or that or whatever.
Okay.
I think, what was the latest proclamation we just did? We just did one a couple, couple of meetings ago.
Yeah, we do one every.
I believe it was the agriculture and labor.
Yeah.
Program.
Yep.
Jerry, or mayor, can I just add something, please? This is me who brought this up to Jerry. And the way it's been since I've been here is someone just puts it in, we put it on the agenda. If I don't have, get a chance to meet with the mayor, he doesn't even know it's on there. So it should be elected officials' decision, in my opinion, that makes that decision whether it goes on. And I got with Jerry, Jerry did research. So this isn't something we've made up. Almost every other council or municipality or county does this, and it shouldn't be up to staff just to put it on there. So now it's up to the mayor.
Yeah, occasionally you'll get one that's, you know, illegitimate. I mean, it's a, it's a hand scribbled this or that, you know, that sort of thing. So just trying to make sense of it all and not put so much information on the agenda that doesn't necessarily need to be there.
All right, thank you.
And anybody's proclamation, if you rejected it and they felt like it wasn't fair, they still have the prerogative to come to the council and talk to us about it.
Absolutely. And if you rejected a proclamation for something that the majority of the population wanted, then right, there would be ramifications.
If you were still, if you were still upset at that point, you could just change this ordinance.
Right.
And change the code.
Right.
Different, and then you all would be the ones that made the decision.
Exactly. Any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve ordinance oh eight dash twenty twenty-three, please.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number nine is the resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh eight.
A resolution of the city council, the City of Avon Park, Florida, providing for adoption of a grant agreement with the Ford Department of Transportation, providing for an effective date.
Okay. Who would like to brief us on this?
I will. As you saw in your packet, this is an add-on to the security fencing out at the airport that you've already approved. The rotating beacon out there hasn't worked probably since not long after I got here. And I don't even know if you can find parts for it, anybody that climbed the tower right now. Fam had put in, got with FDA and Don Gallin, who is our manager that we work with, is just phenomenal to work with. She found the money. And in this, you, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and you're just accepting it, and they need a resolution to go with it.
Any questions on this resolution?
Now, did you say they already put, put one in? No, no, no. I'm just, I'm saying it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars too good. For those who don't know what it is, it's kind of like the lighthouse for the pilots to, to be able at night, to be able to find the airport or in bad weather, to find the air force. So it's not good with it not working.
Right.
Is there a time limit when it has to be put in place? No. Okay.
Yeah, this particular beacon, I mean, I think Maria would probably tell you about it, but basically, you know, it's, it's kind of been a problem for years and years. It's sort of been intermittent because it required a lot of maintenance and that sort of thing. But now this is a brand new one that we hopefully will not have those kind of problems with.
That kind of money, it all worked great.
Yep. Any other questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion for resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh eight?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh eight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure. Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number ten is the purchase of Vermeer chipper. Mr. Schrader.
This chipper was in the uh this year's um CIP, um when we. When we actually got the quote for it, it was much lower than it turned out to be. And in order to get it, it's forty-six thousand seven hundred fifty-three dollars, which we would ask for. Yeah, for you to increase the budget, seven thousand three hundred dollars. That'd be coming out of the general fund reserves.
Okay. All right, questions on this chipper?
Yeah, I have one question. I think this is the second item in the last couple of months we've gone through like this to where. We approved a certain amount of money in the budget, like last year, and then we're purchasing it like this year, and because of. Cost of prices going up and that, we're we're asked to come up more. Is there any way if we approve something like this? For the budget that we buy before the end of the year, before the prices may go up after January?
We tried to, but it wasn't available.
Ah.
And there are some items actually that came in under budget, but right now in the, you know, since COVID hit, you you don't know what prices are gonna be on anything. Or if you can even get them, we're still waiting on vehicles to even uh actually the window to open up to order them.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Is it true that most of the uh state bid contracts or some of these counties that we piggyback on, most of those are actually already negotiated? They can't be changed, is that right?
They can't be, but actually in this one, it was through the Florida Sheriff's Association and they had um. Language in there that it could be if these prices went up and actually Andy, our um um purchasing agent, actually called him and talked to him about that. And they said, yes, that's legitimate.
Well, hopefully all the supply chains will even out and this won't be an issue.
Yeah.
This is typically not an issue, and if there is a change, I mean, it's extremely minimal. This is kind of a a rare thing that it would change that much.
Uh, I got a question for Mark. Mark, is is chipper, is it something that the city needs now? Do we have a chipper? Can we hold off on it? I'm just.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually read off, because it's it's in your CIP. It says, when we put in for it, the city does not currently own a brush chipper. A brush chipper is needed due to large amount of tre- tree trimming the city does and also the help during storm debris. When trees are trimmed now, the branches are pulled onto a trailer and hauled off. This is very inefficient and time-consuming due to the very large. Or the small number of limbs that can be placed on a trailer. With a chipper, the limbs would be chopped immediately upon trimming. Collected in the bed of a dump truck, allowing for more time on the job, actually trimming or picking up the debris. So the answer is yes, something we need.
So Mark, the city never had a chipper?
I don't know. They didn't have one since I got here, but, you know, if it isn't approved, it's going right back in for next year's budget and it's gonna be probably higher. But no, uh as far as I know, they haven't had one, maybe years ago they did.
And what we're gonna do with, once, once we chip up the wood, are we gonna use it for the city?
Well, it's always for the city. We're we're always cutting limbs on it that hang out over roads or clearing lots or storm debris or.
No, I think she's asking after it's chipped.
Yeah, the chips.
Oh, I don't know what they're gonna use it for for sure. If not, it'll go out to our landfill, but they may be able to find use to put it somewhere. Don't know till we get it and we use it.
Are are we paying a company to mulch at our landfill or are we doing that ourselves?
We're doing it ourselves.
Okay, and our mulcher that we use, are you talking about like a skid steer mulcher or do we have?
Skid steer.
Okay, so basically at our landfill where we take all the branches, it's has limited space. And so it keeps getting built up higher and higher and and different administrations over the years have not done a great job of mulching that down. And so we only have so much space out there, and once we run out of space, we have to buy more property and all that, so. As compact as we can possibly make all of our debris, it would just help prolong the life of our landfill too. So in the fact of keeping more hours on the job and not having to drive to the landfill back and forth, back and forth, most of these crews that go out, they don't have a great big. You know, grapple truck that they're driving, because they're having to actually take workers with them and everything. So they have limited space in their dump trucks. So if you can chip it up, you're basically, I think it's three or four times as much volume you can put in a given area if it's chipped versus not chipped. So you're just allowing them to be on the job for, you know, two or three times as long, so.
Like, and I get, it makes sense now. I guess the last question I was asking Mark is, if we got the wood chip. Do, can we not use them?
Like for mulch?
Or mulching?
Yeah.
Is there something Mark thought about doing? I mean, if we're gonna pay for a chip, we might as well get the the most we can get out of it.
Yeah, so the issue with mulches has to be treated.
Yeah, it has to be composted, so you get um anything that's foreign out of there that might create a problem for you. Otherwise, you put it in your beds and all of a sudden, all kinds of weird stuff grow up in there.
Yeah, so if you look at the mulch, it's usually either black or red or, you know, it's a certain color, and the reason why is because it's been treated. Any other questions on the chipper?
I'll just, we said that Pasco County um did did allow people to come and pick up for free the mulch that they did. But it was composted on a pile and it was, it was steaming, I mean, literally steaming hot, composting, so.
Yeah, I don't know if that other uh tree limb landfill that's sort of on the. North east corner of town there, I think it's actually in the in the county, but they, there's a place over there, it used to be an old um clay pit. They take trees. I don't know if they've started grinding up trees there or not, but if they have, they might have an idea of what we could do with all that mulch, you know. I don't know if they're selling it or what they're doing with it, but.
Yeah, that's where they took most of the storm debris.
Okay, even if we chip it up, you know, if they're already making chips for a particular reason, they might let us add to their pile for free or something, you know. Maybe. All right, any other questions on the chipper? Seeing none, do we have a motion for item number ten?
I make a motion to approve on M D ten for the wood chipper in amount of forty-six thousand seven hundred fifty-three dollars, please.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any last questions?
And that's also upping the budget by seventy-three hundred dollars.
Yes.
Okay, was that?
Seven thousand three hundred.
Was that part of your motion, Jim?
Yes, it is.
Okay, is that part of your second?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well now call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number eleven, City of Avenon Park invoice for services rendered by C L A.
C L A, there are auditors, um this is over my amount to approve thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars, so council needs to approve that.
Okay, do we have questions on this invoice? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the invoice for services rendered by C L A.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any last questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number twelve is the approved continuing contract for engineering consulting services.
Three of our continuing contacts for engineering consulting services, Cool and Cobb, Civil Serve. Impulse and are all up this month in the uh in their five-year contracts. There's two two-year extensions if they request it. And council approves it. I would recommend we do it. There's three outstanding firms that we work with and greatly needed for the city. We couldn't get things done without them.
They have two two-year extensions. This is the first of those two two-year extensions?
Correct.
Okay. All right, any questions? On D twelve?
I just had one question. Do all of our permits that come before the city, do they all get sent to these engineers? Or is it just particular ones?
No, it you, the ones where we need an engineer, we use Polston and we use Cool and Cobb. Right now, the only thing we use Civil Serve for, even though it allows us to use it for other things, is stormwater.
So we're, are we still required to do that even though, because all of our permitting is done down at the county?
Yes.
Right, so that's, people are required to submit engineered plans that are stamped off by an engineer.
Correct.
And then it's all being sent to the county and checked by another engineer. So we're required to pay a third engineer to look over these plans?
Yes, they look them over for the city.
But we don't, our engineers don't look them over redundantly, though. It's it's just done by the county.
Correct.
I think that's where your question.
Right, okay.
Any other questions?
Uh, um, Mark, I I heard you say you recommend that we prove them all. You deal with these engineers firms probably more than council does. That, as far as you know, they've got good rating and good standing with us that, you know.
Cool and Cobb and Polston, I've never heard a bad word about either one of them and um they work. Great with the city, they work with the county, they work with the Towne Lake Placid, they they work with Sebring all the time. So now I have nothing but respect for all of them.
Yep. There's also a limited number of engineers that do the the type of work that they do as well. But historically, they've they've been extremely responsive to the city's needs. Any other questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the continuing contract for engineering consulting services for all three.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number thirteen is be approved the D E O H two three seven two Fair Housing Grant Modification Number Five.
This is another uh modification. We need your approval so the mayor can sign, um gives us six more months. The C D B G grants, what these are has nothing to do with who's overseeing it. It goes back to supply and demand and um. Lack of skilled labors and dealing with contractors has just been a long drawn out. Couple of years.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve D E O H two three seven two. Modification of the five.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now for the items you've all been waiting for, the attorney updates.
I guess this this is not as exciting as you would like.
Oh, okay, all right, it was wishful thinking.
That, do we have um? Is, is um the um. Engineering firm ignite uh or uh ignite wireless, the tower firms that, are they on the? Because.
I thought it was too.
Yeah, and I'm I'm just, I'm just wondering, it maybe be easier, because we might, we might lose them if. At least half an hour.
Yeah, item number fifteen.
Yeah, if they're on, if they're not on, it doesn't matter.
Mister Romero?
Yes, hello, good evening.
Good evening. If if the council doesn't mind, I I'll just take that other item first, so we can uh dispense with that.
Go ahead.
He doesn't have to listen to us do the other part unless he wants to. Okay, so um you have in your package the um agreement, it's um on there, it's page two hundred and thirty of your um. P D, PDF. Um, we worked on this past back and forth, um and um. Uh, they have a couple pivotal items that they say they're just, they're just deal breakers and um they're they're there for you. The first one. Write the lease, make month, making monthly payments equal to the monthly rental rate during testing period is not an option. If this must, uh if this is a must, please advise. I I think that they misread what I what I did there. All I did was I um. I simply stated that the um. Um, the testing period amount, which hasn't been filled in yet, or in the contract, would apply. In both circumstances, but so it's not the whole, the full rent, uh clearly that would not be fair. And uh so I just told them, basically, I I I figure we could work that out just to make matter of language. The second one's more of an issue. I I said, this is not something I can. I can recommend, it has to be something that you guys have to uh approve if you wish. Um, their rent increases. Basically by CPI or 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 fair market value. Um, so the computer, um the uh consumer price in index uh or fair market value is what, you know. We'd like to see and certainly what we imposed on others. Um, they say that their their circumstances are different and all they can offer is one point five, uh increases of one point five percent per year. Um, and um so they feel like that'd be a deal breaker, and I said, well, I don't break deals. I simply take them to the council and let them do that. So um uh it's it's up to you how you want to do it. If you're okay with a one point five percent, then um um that's your prerogative. Um, I had, I had to suggest and, you know, either CPI or fair market value and or both, you know, we did both in another contract. So um. We um. Yeah, I I did mention to them that there were times in the eighties and the late nineties where, you know, the CPI was huge. And one point five would be, you know, not enough. And of course, you know, more recently, CPI was actually le- less than one, like a couple of years ago. So, you know. Overall, uh though I think that one point five would be lo- low if you're looking at CPI or fair market value. I leave that to you to decide. He has, they have an argument that they want to propose to you. Okay, up to you. Mister Romero?
Yes, good evening, uh mayor and and council. Um, thank you, Mister Burrow, for uh. Explaining uh the the current, the situation. So as it uh as it relates to annual increases. Uh what we're faced with in our industry as are our tenants, so this is a tower lease we're talking about. And and our intent is we have two tenants um that we would be leasing space to, provided, you know, this deal went forward. And none of us, um so our tenants as well of us will um see annual increases. From our respective tenants, so that's Ignite Wireless and Ignite Wireless's tenants. So those being T-Mobile and uh Verizon, they will not see um increases. From their subscribers. Um, so for us to pay increases is. Understandably the way of the world, but we will not be seeing increases to that amount from people we are renting to. And again, their subscribers, so um and I think uh I I shared, uh I know, and I share. Uh, you know, Attorney Burr's uh experiences, I too, a child of the eighties and and I remember. You know, where where we were with inflation in those times and I get it, uh but. Unfortunately, we're just not there now, and uh so anyway, um. As Mister Burr said, we'll uh leave it in your hands, but uh, you know.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer.
I would say that the old day, I said, in the event that you all were flexible on this, and I'm not saying you should or you shouldn't. I'm just simply saying, if you were, would you be willing to shorten the term of the agreement? Because obviously, if if you're talking about a fifty-year term, one point five per percent per year, you know, could be ridiculously low. By the time you get to thirty or forty years. Um, and they did agree to lower it to twenty-five as a a a potential term. So um if you did it, it would apply for twenty-five years. I just don't want to be the one that um presents to you and and says. Go for it, another classic palladium. There with that agreement.
Yeah. Understood. Well, with that, I would open it up to the council. Do you have any questions for either the attorney or Mister Romero?
Uh, I just have two questions for Mister Romero. Uh, first of all, how long is the testing? Uh, part goth usually lasts?
So typically, a year, but we have had times where we've had to go into a second year. To get uh all the investigations and and approvals that we need. It is highly unusual and I will say unlikely that anything beyond twenty-four months is needed. But the lease, just to be clear, the lease that we have in front of you does uh allow for three one-year testing periods.
Okay, and when do you expect uh the start date and obviously the stop date is definitely open, right?
Correct, so the start date would be uh more or less two or three months, and this is speculation. Uh after the uh the lease is signed by both parties.
But it might, uh let me clarify quickly for you that that they're not saying that they shouldn't have to pay anything during testing, because they're, they left a blank. As to what they should pay, and we have not discussed the blank, but we'll have to discuss. And we have not discussed the blank, but we'll have to discuss the blank at some point. Um, I just, you know, I I didn't do too much in case, you know, this didn't go anywhere, you know, if I spent a hundred hours on it, you would be very disappointed with your bill and then not having anything to show for it. So um we'll have to discuss that at a later point, but and then, you know, we'll probably have to discuss that with them and find out what uh is acceptable, but the that is open to discussion, is it not, Mister Romeo?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, then I I just have one more question, then uh i- is the service from these carriers up and running during most of the testing part or after a few months?
Uh, no, so that the testing during the testing period, this is where we'll seek approval from the local historical uh association from the F A A. The the actual construction of the tower and the um the uh transmission, if you will, we're we're looking uh a good eighteen to twenty four months after the investigation uh investigative period is and testing period is over.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But you just bear in mind, there won't be anything that'll modify the property during the testing period. After that, when they do start modifying the property, then the lease runs uh begins.
Okay. So do we not have a rough idea of what this lease payment actually would be?
No. So something we'll have to discuss. Um, and uh
How was it determined?
I I think, well, you can have a appraiser come out and appraise it. Um, and um uh you can use an M A I or, you know, there might be even if you wanted to go less expensive than M A I, which is not cheap. Um, you could use a probably a realtor, some realtors do commercial appraisals. Um, I know that the other thing is just to get an order of magnitude is so there you can check with other cities that have tower agreements and see what they charge.
Okay. Mister Romeo, any insight as to what you typically pay for a tower of this size?
I would say our our range here would be between twelve and thirteen hundred and fifty a month.
Twelve and thirteen fifty a month, okay. Any other questions for Mister Romeo?
No. No, I I know um Mister Romeo would like to have an answer right away, but if you want to want to consider this and then let us know in two weeks at your next meeting, um that that's your prerogative as well, because it's been it's been sitting out there for a while. I don't want to ru- rush you, but want you to make the decision you're comfortable with later on. And that you'll be comfortable that other councils will be comfortable with.
So the monthly amount is decided on by who, the council or?
It's a negotiated amount.
So please correct me if I'm wrong. Should we come up with that amount before we start to figure the other percentage?
Well, no, the increases are basically uh uh they would be automatic, you know, um
Oh, I see.
implemented based on these either these factors which they don't agree to, or there'll be automatically one point five percent every year. It'll go up. That's what they would like to see.
And and that's when we decide if it's going to be fifty or twenty five.
Why then twenty five, right? Huh? You already loaded twenty five.
Yeah.
Twenty five years. Yeah, they're not going to agree to a and we're not, I I I would not recommend that you agree to a fifty year contract for this type of circumstance.
All right.
Any other questions?
No, but uh I for one would like to um I think the most important thing here is the service or quality of service and the improvement of service for citizens of Maybach Park, and I think that uh um I think we should move forward as quickly as possible and under under those terms and then make the adjustment to the other terms when we get to the final contract.
Right, this this is just a, you know, initial indication and you always have the ch- the opportunity, you know, when this contract comes up for final approval to say, no, I don't think we'll do that because that'll have to be in the form of an ordinance anyway, because in excess of the period of time.
Yeah. So, I mean, obviously, lowering the uh the limit, the term would definitely be helpful. I thought we were talking about a a much larger amount of money here, um but I'll be honest with you. I mean, one point five percent versus three percent versus four percent, you're only talking a difference of fifty to a hundred dollars. Um
Yeah.
You know, difference, you're only talking basically two hundred and fifty bucks per year versus uh up to maybe five hundred bucks per year uh increase. So it's not a huge amount of money.
Yeah, it's less huge with the twenty five year period.
Right, exactly. So I would definitely be in favor of a shorter term rather than a longer term.
How much property is it that doesn't have square footage or anything in here?
I I don't know the the acreage off the top of my head. Um, do you know, Mister Romeo?
It would be um I'm going to say so we we haven't obviously done design visit and those things yet, but typically we're talking less than a quarter of an acre. So the largest footprint um we deal is uh deal with, excuse me, is a hundred by a hundred feet. So that's the largest.
This obviously is a smaller tower than what your largest probably is, so.
You are correct.
So are there, would there be any other restrictions on anything else that we could do with the property within so, you know, far of a distance with this pole or are they just strictly getting the footprint of the pole?
There would be a fence around the perimeter of the land you're using, right?
That's correct, yes. And there are, I mean, from our standpoint, there's no restrictions.
Right, uh you know, you I I would have to check with um um Central Ford Regional Planning Council, but uh but we did talk with them earlier and they said there was no no issue with that or.
Well, I talked to the one that oversees where it's uh protected, uh because it I probably talked to a couple of, maybe you all don't know, but remember that they couldn't go in where they wanted. However, I met them out there and they liked an area that was behind the um you know, police department, um the sheriff's office, North District now. And if you've ever been out there, there's a pole barn behind there. And it's just to the east of the pole barn. The only thing with C F R P C we're still waiting on is because they want to increase the height of the tower because you uh Frank, I think you have two more vendors, right?
Uh, yes, so we have, uh I believe, secured a second one, so that was uh the reason for that height increase. You're correct.
Is that is that going to be within the cone of influence of the airport uh elevations? I don't know where it's at, so I don't know.
Yeah, and like I said, Jeff Jeff was looking into to that and but Jess out right now, so.
But he may not know the F A A regulations on that and because that that might be an issue. We have to make sure we look at because I don't know what those cones are. I know there are some
Right.
previously flying myself, but um uh I don't I don't know what those uh those are and somebody probably needs to check those. Yeah, miss, possibly Mister Romeo already looked at it since he knows we have an airport.
So, yes, uh well, I have not looked at it, yes, but that is part of the due diligence during the investigative period and when we do get the official uh notification or report back from the F A A, of course, we would we would forward that to you, whoever would like to be uh um copied on that.
City manager.
Frank, was it like thirty feet?
Excuse me?
Was it thirty feet more?
Thirty feet.
Uh, that's that sounds right.
Yeah. Any conflict from Sheriff's Office, Mister Hood? We're getting a affirmative shake? No. Okay. All right, so uh do you, Jerry, do you think it would be wise to wait two weeks on this or do you think we can make a decision tonight if the council wants?
That's totally up to you. I I if you're comfortable with making a decision tonight, then I think that would be the best thing since we can move this forward and everybody would be happier to have it done. But if you feel like you're not sure and you'd like to give us some thought, um then then um I I want to leave you that option since this has been hanging out for six months already.
Okay. And there's nothing else in term of this that we really need to vote on rather than just the one point five percent?
Right, well, I'll I'll be bringing you back to the lease once we get it in in order for two readings of of ordinance.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the council? Okay.
No.
Anyone care to make a motion?
I make a motion, we go ahead and approve to move forward this as quick as possible.
To accept the one term to the terms that he
One point five percent?
Yes.
For how many years?
Twenty five.
No, for how many years?
Twenty five.
Twenty five, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. I can sense some apprehension. So is there more questions?
I'll just make one little comment that uh with my career in telecommunications, especially in California, there was uh when cell towers first started going up all over the place, then there was a lot of them that went on city and county properties, but there also was quite a few of them that went on business property. So there's always other options out there for where they could put it. But uh as far as the the bell system is concerned, they had no issues with those whatsoever because they have to provide them with local communications to be able to access the test equipment, you know, from afar. So I I I for one don't think there's any issue or problem with having one at that area or any other area in the city.
This particular location, I'll just say that uh if you were going to try and hide a tower somewhere, this is a pretty good spot to do that.
Yep.
Um, it is an industrial area. It's also got a pretty good wide berth all the way around it with both of those railroad tracks and some pretty tall trees. Uh that would probably obstruct the view from just about anyone that was not absolutely trying to look for it. So I think that would probably be a good thing. Um, but like you're saying, is by lowering it to twenty five years, I don't think the C P I is going to affect us that much. Um, but um, you know, just my opinion. Any other questions or comments?
Just have a question, but this is just from my own curiosity. Who maintains the growth inside of the fence?
They do.
They do? Okay.
Mister Romeo, they they typically have uh like gravel or something like that in there, don't they?
Exactly.
Yep. So these would be similar to uh maybe what you've seen on Memorial.
Okay.
Going out of town there.
You see it a lot of the um power um station, uh substations as well.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. We'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We have our direction on that then.
Mister Romeo, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night. Okay, so we're on to um this presentation. I will try and go through it as quickly as possible if um and if I takes me more than a half hour, I'll just stop. Um, because I don't think even, let me just simply say that I I started to say, okay, well, this is not enough information. I need to look into these bills and see what if I did that for every one of these bills that were impacting you this this year, it would have taken me another six months to get this thing done. So I had to just simply say, um, I've done a cursory thing. I took a lot from uh uh a seminar that I took from Florida League of Cities, um you know, Florida Municipal Attorneys Association put on. Um, and I did get permission to cut and paste a lot of that, which saved a lot of time. Um, so um a lot of this is from their 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 materials. Uh otherwise, like I said, it would have taken me at least weeks to do that. That's not even going into depth with these, but it'll give you an idea as to what you might want to look at more in deep, more deeper terms, and you can certainly ask me to do that if you wish. So Senate Bill seven seventy four, uh the first couple are are basically the explosions. Um, then there's other other minor explosions, but these are the big ones, Senate Bill seven seventy fours. Um, it's now law. Um, this is the um switching you all from Form One to Form Six. I put some Form Six out there for you to look it over because the instructions are pretty pretty are really just there for you to look at because the form is an old one. It's a two twenty two thousand twenty. I could not find a two thousand twenty two that you could actually download. Um, maybe Mark did, I don't know, but I I couldn't find one and and uh because it's online. Basically, you go online and fill that out uh in their si- in their system. Um, but basically, in a in a nutshell, you report assets worth more than a thousand dollars. The value of your household goods and personal effects may be aggregated and reported as a lump sum if the aggregate value exceeds one thousand dollars. The types of assets that can be uh reported in this manner are described on the form. Assets individually values of at more than one thousand dollars describe and state the value of each asset that you had on a reporting date you selected for your net worth. If you if the asset was worth more than a thousand and you have not already included that asset in the aggregate value of your household goods and personal effects, you have to fill it out. Um, some of the assets, I won't go through all those. They're there for you to look at. Um, liabilities in excess of one thousand dollars. Once again, you know, this is um much more onerous than what you had to fill out before. And um uh this is very small and I did, that says one dollar, but it's one thousand dollars on the date that you chose uh for your net worth. Um, you are not required to disclose liabilities that are solely your spouse's responsibility. Um one of the other things is he lists the name of each source of income that provides you more than one thousand dollars in income two thousand twenty two, much different than Form One, which you can either go with a a value or you can go with a percentage of total income. The income of your spouse need not be disclosed. Um, bill also increases the maximum penalty from ten thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars. That's that's throughout, by the way, that's all, you know, everybody people fill out Form One as well. Um, so um the next bill we have, it's an explosion, is Senate Bill one seventy. Um, this is going to be really difficult to figure out how we do this. Um, that we're all scratching our heads at this point, but I I will be attending the Florida Municipal Attorneys Association Seminar um in a couple of weeks and uh maybe I'll know more at that point. Uh, because legislature have had to do this for a long time. They want to now impose this on you. So it adds to the process for local governments to passing ordinances to give a certain additional rights to those challenging the the local ordinances. The bill requires counties and cities to produce a business impact estimate prior to passing the ordinance with some accessions, and they're not, those exceptions are are not meaningful. I'll just simply say, okay, there are types, you know, they're just, you know, incidental ordinances as opposed to anything that has any value to it. Uh, the estimate must be published in a local government's website, include certain information such as proposed ordinance's purpose, estimated economic impact on businesses and compliance costs. The bill imposes certain conditions on lawsuits brought by any party to challenge the legality of a uh ordinances as preempted by state law, uh which is not hard to do because we keep track of, you know, the the city attorneys keep track of what's been preempted. But the more difficult or the subjective of um I D D is arbitrary or unreasonable. If your ordinances are arbitrary or unreasonable, you can be sued. Um and um requires a local government to suspend enforcement of an ordinance and such legal challenges under certain circumstances. Requires court to give those cases which enforcement of the ordinance is suspended priority over those pending cases and render a preliminary final decision as expeditiously as possible. Good luck. There's there's probably twenty or thirty different types of of um laws where they say the court's supposed to give you give you uh uh expedited um entry into court and it just doesn't happen. Because they're just over so overloaded, not because they're they're lazy, but just they're just loaded with stuff to do and it just can't happen. So it provides that a court can award up to fifty thousand dollars in attorney fa- attorney fees to the prevailing plaintiff, which means you don't get anything if you prevail. So um bill also provides that properly noticed consideration of a proposed ordinance may continue to a subsequent meeting under certain circumstances without further publication, mailing, or posted notice. Now, this is an interesting one because uh conventional wisdom has always been that, you know, when you post your notice or the meeting and you go and for some reason um you delay a um a particular item such as an ordinance, you know, a second reading before most municipalities, you know, we're taking the conservative point of view that you have to renotice it again. Um, and there were a couple that got sued on doing it the other way, which is, well, we already noticed it. They already knew it was there. If they were at the meeting, they cared about it. And they came to the meeting, then they would know that we we continued this to X meeting, you know, two weeks from now or three weeks from now or whatever. And um um well, the legislature said they like that, so that's the way it is now. We'll get, we'll know more about that soon. But it looks like we'll save on some mailing for ordinances where we go to second reading and we've already published. You don't have to republish again to to have it passed at a different meeting. So that's the way it appears at this moment. Um, municipalities must notice intent to consider an ordinance ten days before adoption. Um, and that that means that um that's pretty much what we do now. However, municipalities must also read the ordinance by title or unfold at least two separate days before adoption by vote, which is what we do now. An ordinance passed by the municipality effective becomes effective ten days after passage unless otherwise prescribed in the ordinance. That's new. Municipality may may bypass reading and notice requirements to pass an emergency ordinance by two thirds vote of the governing body. Uh, so that's that's not new. An emergency ordinance may not be used to adopt zoning and land use changes. I believe that's new. Uh, required to include um potable water, um, oh, I'm sorry, this is a new one. Uh, House Bill thirteen seventy nine, environmental protection. Um, you're required to include potable water, solid waste, drainage wastewater, and aquifer recharge elements in your comp plan. There's some aspect of it now, but they've gotten more detailed. Must consider feasibility of sewer service to any group of fifty residential lots over ten year planning period. Um, that's confusing to me. We'll figure that out as we go, but it really is to eliminate Um, that's confusing to me. We'll figure that out as we go, but it really is to eliminate, which is a, uh, something that's been through the last. Two sessions to try and get rid of septic tanks and get them on city sewers, you know, which is obviously a pollution issue, which uh, uh, go into a little further down as well. Um, grants or loans are to be made available by D E P to offset the cost of converting septic to city sewer and cities are encouraged to include availability on the website. That is a encouragement, not a mandate, but it's a good idea because um, some people might be more willing to do so than to spend. Six, seven, eight thousand dollars for residential septic tank to be redone. I don't know what it costs today. That's what it used to cost. Uh, House Bill fourteen oh five biosolids. Biosolids is the wastewater sludge that's produced by your wastewater plant and is um. Uh, has been, it's, it's basically dried, but, but either with um, uh, uh, a belt. Press or a uh, plate and frame press. So it's like cake. And uh, then it's spread on the ground. Uh, it's either fertilizer, you know, cows aren't supposed to eat, but they often do.
Cows, did you say cows?
Yeah, they're not supposed to eat that. Uh, I, but I've, I've seen them following it. I, I will go there. Alright. D E P to make available grants converting cla- class A biosolage, which is a really good class, but a lot of plants do class B. Class A is a good, good one. Or the class A A, which is higher removal path pathogens of metals for use in ag. Um, so that might be a good thing if you get a grant and get a group of cities together. In this region to, you know, produce a great, a, a double A plant. To uh, like Sarasota County has one and there's several around the, the state. Where it's not the, the quality of malorganite, but it's similar and, you know, you know, where it's been, the pathogens are pretty much removed and. And um, it's um, pretty stable. It doesn't smell, you know, any worse than malorganite does. And so um, it can be used in more, uh, better, better ways and reused.
Are we currently producing the class A biosolids?
I, I don't know that. I would think that you probably, probably are since you have, uh, I know you have belt presses. I've seen those.
Yeah, we, we produce the cake and then we, we haul it to probably the class A A, you're saying?
To, to the dump, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, solid waste facility, excuse me. Uh, we'll help, they'll also will help you, you, um, um, here's the um. House Bill or Senate Bill one sixty two, utility operator licensing reciprocity, or they've never had reciprocity before and I. I'm surprised to see this. Um, this requires the E P to offer reciprocity to licensed operators from other states where the licensure exam is comparable to Florida. Uh, and this is my comment. This will help utilities hire um, more licensed operators, which are not easy to hire. Um, especially in rural areas, you know, um, I know some. That the cities that I represent in Hardy County have a real problem. You know, hiring licensed operators. To come and live there. Uh, preemption over utility or service restrictions. Um, this prohibits a local government from enacting or enforcing ordinance resolution, rule code, policy. From taking any action restrictions prohibits of the effect of restricting or prohibiting the use of major appliances. Including stoves and gas grills. Anybody guess what this is about?
California.
Yeah, gas, gas stoves. Uh, are, are. You can't, you cannot regulate those. Okay. I didn't think you could, but I thought you might enjoy that. Okay, House Bill's thirteen seventy nine, this um, requires the B M A Ps uh, to include five year implementation. Milestones and a bunch of other things, which I'm, I won't go into because it's very complicated, but. B M A Ps basically are uh, basin management action plans. Uh, you have areas where. Things tend to uh, uh, run from, you know, pollution, polluted areas or run down to. And the, the basin is where it's all collected. Then you have um. Uh, watersheds a- also within that. So um, you are in the Lake Okeechobee um. Basin and uh, your treatment people um, uh, public works while you want to know what this is about because it does affect them to some extent, but. A much greater effect will be on the, the issue of stormwater drainage. This is where this looms very large. As they're um, working with it now with a T M D L, which is a um, uh, totally maximum daily limit. And uh, there, which is a precursor to saying you can't discharge more than this because they're basically studying it. In my opinion, environmental protection, again, uh, House Bill thirteen seventy nine, each new. Um, each newer reviews revised B map uh, must include a list of any projects developed in connection with cooperative agricultural regional water quality improvement element. So I, I think I spent a lot of time with this because this is something that, you know, your engineers and the um, um, public works people are gonna need to get together. And um, hash over. It's here for you to look at. If you have any questions, please get with me. Okay, and we have another um. Oh, yeah, that's, that's a, that's a duplicate, sorry. Rural development, uh, House Bill twelve oh nine. Specifies that an agency agreement that provides state or federal financial assistance to local government entities within a rural area of opportunity. Must allow the agency to provide payment for invoices of this county municipality R A O. For verified or eligible performance that has been completed in accordance with the terms and conditions of agreement. Um, what I get out of this is they're basically uh, making it slightly easier for you to get uh, grants, especially if you're in a um, a rural, um, rural community. Um, I guess they call it ready community. Um, but um, also um. Uh, the impression that I got from this was that um. Um, they would, they are now allowing for payments to be made. Uh, when your, your application's being made and so on, and that those payments would still be. Um, applicable if you got the grant. I believe that's the way it is, but I'll defer to somebody else to look at that deeply. This is one of the ones I wanted to look at closer. Um, but uh, uh, it's, it's the um, that bill is a morass. I don't know how else to say it. Um, but there are some, uh, some. Matching issues there. They've apparently changed. Um, I think um, Melody would be more familiar with those matching requirements than I am. Employee organizations representing public employees. This is the one that you've probably heard about, the guarded unions. Um, and so it's um, um, beginning July first. Um, a public employee who desires to be a member of an employee organization to sign date of membership authorization form is prescribe a, the perk. With a bargaining agent and revoke membership anytime for any reason. Um, does not apply to um, correctional officers, uh, law enforcement, um. Probation officers or firefighters. The bill uh, prohibits an employee organization that has been certified. As a bargaining agent from having its dues and uniform assessments deducted and collected by the employer. From the employee's salaries. Um, specifies that the employee in an organization that had less than sixty percent participation by eligible employees must petition perk. For recertification, which can be challenged by the employer or a, an eligible employee. Cost of membership must be provided to members uh, in advance, so. Um.
Does that affect any of our current unions?
Uh, yes. Uh, okay, I was gonna say, I don't, I don't.
Ask me union or?
Correct. Yeah, I don't work with those. Uh, your employment attorney will probably give you a much better rundown on that when next comes up. Temporary commercial kitchens. Um, this is an odd one for me. You know, remember we did the um, um, food trucks uh, last year or to the year before last? Because they, they said you can't regulate your food trucks anymore. We'll tell you how you can regulate them. And it, and it's limited to this. Okay, well, now it's the same thing with these temporary commercial kitchens. Um, which seem to be like basically. Bands that have kitchens in them that they move from place to place. And so uh, they basically said that they were gonna limit that substantially, and there's a lot of information there that I put, I provided in, in here and it's in the uh. Um, the document from um. Florida, Fort Liga Cities. Safety and Private Spaces Act Legislative Purpose Intended Bill is, I had to put that in there because I didn't understand it. Providing restrooms and changing facilities uh, for exclusive use females and males respectively. To their sex in order to maintain public safety, decency, decorum, and privacy. They have definitions of female and male, which um. I, I know everybody's heard this already on, on TV. Uh, applies to, among other things, public facilities owned or leased by. And I had looked this up because I wasn't sure they meant, they, because they said it's leased. Um, that um. Municipal leases. I know that meant where we leased them or we leased the, the property from somebody else. But it says leased by, it doesn't say to, but I assume it means to the city. So um. I, we'll have to wait and see how that comes out, but that's, that's how I read the bill. Not great. Uh, sets forth, uh, not great with regard to how you, how this is laid out as far as um, it doesn't say who, whether, if you lease to somebody else, whether you have to make them apply this as well. But I'm suspecting it does because you are owner and it does specifically mention owners. Well, no more soon. Sets forth the circumstances in which entity to a restaurant. Entry to a restaurant or changing facility designated for opposite sex on the premises or covered entity is appropriate. To accompany a, a person of opposite sex to assist a chaperone, a child under twelve years of age. Which I'm sure all men that have had daughters can appreciate because I, I had that circumstance. Uh, an elderly person or a person with disability and developmental disabilities. Um. For law enforcement and governmental regulatory purposes, emergencies, maintenance, obviously. Um, restroom for changing facility is out of order or under repair, so on and so forth. Um, requires restrooms and changing facilities that are designated for exclusive use by females. Uh, and for exclusive use by males or a unisex restroom. Uh, or changing facility intended for a single occupant or family in which the, the, a person may be in a. A state of undress enclosed in floor to ceiling walls. And accessed by a full door with secure lock that prevents someone from entering while the room is in use. If willfully entered without exception. Uh. Then uh, and uh, without exemption, I think that should say. And it does say. And refuses to deport on demand by persons authorized on demand commits a criminal trespass. I, I was actually surprised the second part of that sentence, but. That you have, somebody has to make a demand that they leave and then if they don't leave, they commit a trespass. House Bill thirteen eighty three addresses occupation license on local governments, which is a legislature passed in two thousand twenty one. Uh, bill prohibits all the government from requiring a license issued by a local government or C I L B. I have no idea what that is. To perform a job scope which does not substantially correspond to one of the state's contractors or specialty contractor categories. And then it does list those um, uh, the ones that um, we, you can continue to license. Technology transfer, transparency, excuse me, prohibits employees of government entity from using their position or any state resources. To communicate with a social media platform to request that it remove content or accounts. Governmental entity may not initiate or maintain any agreements with a social media platform for the purposes of content moderation. Uh. Does not apply to routine account maintenance, uh, attempts to remove accounts or content pertaining to the commission of a crime. Or efforts to prevent imminent bodily harm, loss of life, or property damage. Prohibits online platforms that provide online ser- online services, product, games, or features that are. Likely to be predominantly accessed by children from processing or collecting personal information of children. In various methods described in the bill. I'm sure you all have heard about that on the news. A violation of the statute is an unfair and deceptive practice actionable and enforceable by the D L A. Um, and the um, the bill creates the Florida Digital Bill of Rights to allow states' consumers to control the digital flow of their personal information. Including a right to confirm and access their personal data, delete, correct, or obtain a copy of that personal data. Opt out of processing of personal data for purposes of targeting, advertising, sale of personal data. Profiling and furtherance of, furtherance of a decision that produces a legal or similarly significant effect concerning this consumer. Opt out of collection of sensitive data and opt out of. Collection of personal data collected through operation of voice recognition feature. This bill prohibits a, a device that has a, a voice or facial recognition feature, video or audio recording features. Or other electronic visual or thermal or olfactory. Features that collect data from such features from engaging in surveillance when the features are. Not inactive used by the consumer or expressly authorized by the consumer. Okay, Senate Bill seventeen eighteen is on immigration, prohibits accounting or municipality from providing funds to any person in the organization. For the purpose of issuing an identification card or other document to an individual who does not provide. Proof of lawful presence in the United States. Beginning July first, two thousand twenty three, requires private employers with twenty five or more employees to use E verify system for new employees. Uh, governments have been required for at least six or seven years. I think it's longer than that, actually. The bill retains current law enforcement for public employers and contractors. Use E verify system, which we include in all our contracts. Beginning July first, amends penalties for employers, noncompliance to register and use E verify system, including imposing a daily fine of a thousand dollars a day. Uh, and allowing the suspension of the employer license after multiple fines and noncompliance. Creates a third degree felony for an unauthorized alien to knowingly use a false identification document who fraudulently uses an identification document of their person. To obtain employment. Rates penalties for employers who knowingly employ unauthorized aliens effective July first, including quarterly reporting of. Uh, uh, and the suspension or revocation of the employer licenses in certain circumstances. Or hits a person from operating a motor vehicle and if his or her vehicle, driver's license is issued by another state. Which exclusively, exclusively provides such a license to undocumented immigrants who are unable to prove. Provide, prove lawful presence in the United States when a license are issued. Uh, probably something that um. People have required because the um, uh, insurance companies, uninsured motorists, if you carry that, which in Florida, you really need to. Carry that because um, some people, you know, that are undocumented don't carry insurance because it's already circumstance, so. Live Local Act, Senate Bill one oh two, for a ten year period, a bill requires cities and counties to allow multifamily rental and mixed use. Uh, residential to allowable uses in areas zoned for commercial, industrial, and mixed use if at least forty percent of the units are affordable. To income eligible households for at least thirty years. For mixed use projects, at least sixty five percent of the square footage must be used for residential purposes. City may not require the proposed project to obtain a zoning or land use change. Special exception, conditional use approval, variance, or comprehensive plan amendment for the height densities and zoning authorized by the bill. Uh, requires new property tax exemption for newly constructed multifamily developments of over seventy affordable units, which is gonna. Really raise the um, demand for those types of units by developers. Um, authorizes cities and counties to implement additional property tax exemptions for developments at cert households that's. At sixty percent A M I or, or below. Those projects must have a, at least fifty units and dedicate at least twenty percent of the units for affordable housing. More money authorized for, for ship and sale in Florida hometown hero, et cetera. Annexation and contraction. Am I thirty minutes yet?
Five more minutes.
Okay, revised procedure for municipal annexation and contraction. Uh, but not voluntary annexations, by the way, and local government initiatives and referenda. Uh, it identifies the report that must be prepared prior to the annexation as a feasibility study conducted to qualified staff and consultants and provides that study. Must analyze the economic market, technical, financial and management feasibility of proposed annexation or contraction. Enforcement of school zone speed limits. Authorizes municipality to place or install or contract with a, a vendor to place or install an automated speed detection system on a street. Or highway under jurisdiction or a state road if permitted by F D O T that. The system may only be used to enforce speed limits in school zones within thirty minutes before a regularly scheduled breakfast program or school session. During the entirety of the regular scheduled school session and within thirty minutes after the end of the registered session. Um, natural emergencies, providing that uh, following a. A declared natural emergency as defined two fifty two, three, four. A municipality may not prohibit the placement of temporary shelter, including. But not limited to a recreational vehicle, trailer, or similar structure on, on residential property for up to thirty six months. Or until, or until a cert- certificate of occupancy is issued on a permanent residence structure. On the property with, whichever it first occurs first, if certain conditions are met, including. A res- resident makes a good faith effort to rebuild. And such as applying for permit and those types of things. They don't just drag their feet. The temporary shelter is connected to water and electric utilities and does not present a danger to the health and safety. And the resident actually lives in the temporary shelter and doesn't rent it out to somebody else. Uh, enforcement of school zone, I think that, did that arrange? Public safety emergency communication systems. I think you could probably read that. Um, and. See, of course, I think the rest of them you can probably read. They're, they're not as huge items. But if you have any questions about them. Yeah. Council like you need to look closer into something if it's. Council like you need to look closer into something, if it's a land use, we can probably get a report from, uh, Central Ford Regional Planning Council.
Okay, are you gonna hand out the quizzes now?
If you don't want that, I don't think I could pass it.
Well, thank you very much, Jerry.
Thank you.
As he said, if you have any specific questions, um, you can state them now or if you think of them later, please reach out to them. We wanna make sure that we're following the law as much as possible. Anything else on attorney update surgery?
That's it, oh, uh, there's a. Um, a memo by me, um, regarding consent agenda. Like you guys to take advantage of that, obviously it can be abused and shouldn't be abused, uh, some cities, you know, put like twenty or thirty items under there. A lot of which somebody might, uh, the public might want to hear discussed, um, but. It, it does, it's self-explanatory, you, you have the option of pulling something out of the agenda if you wanna talk about it. And, uh, approve the rest of the agenda as a package.
Okay, I know it's part of your, uh, updates, uh, Mark, do you wanna touch on that subject?
Yeah. Basically, when I got here, I wondered why you weren't using consent agenda. I asked Kim, she goes, well, I guess they don't know how to use or just haven't used it. I. Probably don't even know, but year and a half ago, two years ago, I threw something in there, just see how it went, but we talked about it. So I talked with the mayor. Last week, I think, when he's up signing checks and ask him his thought on moving to a consent agenda, it would speed minutes up. That's, I mean, minutes, well, minutes too, that's another, but meetings up on it, cause we talk about a lot of stuff and my. Thought, my opinion doesn't really need a lot to be talked about if it was on a consent agenda. And I know every time when I, when I do the agenda summary, I try to give you, uh, an update as much as I can give you. So you know what's going on because I'm here five days a week and I know what's going on. You don't, you got other jobs and that. But, uh, you know, just a few things tonight, for example, I think that these continuing contracts for engineering could have been on consent agenda. I mean, I don't think you're gonna say, no, Mark, we don't want engineers, so. And, um, like we had the last time fuel at the airport, that just should have been on a consent agenda, or the other one on tonight. It was C L A, well, we have to pay them, they're our auditors, but it's above my limit right now, so to me, that's a consent agenda. I saw on Sebring, cause we're gonna have it coming up here soon, but disposal of vehicles, we're gonna get rid of a bunch of vehicles, we got a bunch of them lined up there now. And to me, that could be a consent agenda, where you can say, no, don't get rid of it. So I, I would just like to start using it, I mean, like Jerry, and I talked to Jerry and he said, you know, he would. Do this memo to you and give you an idea what it's about, but. I, I pulled up a few of them, cause I was looking for the language, I found once, it just spells it right out, they put it on there. Above it every time saying this consent agenda, but if, you know, a council member wants to pull it out and I. I was going in front of the, the, uh, B O C C L time with sheriff's office, I got to go over there a lot, I mean. They couldn't run, obviously they got a lot more going on without a consent agenda, but every once in a while, someone will pull it off, like. Hey, why are you guys buying a hundred bulletproof vests or something like that, you know, for us, but. I would like to try moving that way, I mean, if you guys, you, you all got questions of Jerry, how it works, but you can look at almost. Like Jerry said, it can be abused, he puts, but I think I've. Showing you, I'm not gonna throw anything out there, try and get anything by, I don't gain anything by it, I want you to know what's going on, but I. And I also get as much on the background, you know, in there and, you know, a lot of stuff, it's already been approved by you, it's in the C P I and that, hey, we're gonna buy a. Uh, a truck for a hundred thousand dollars or whatever, approved, I mean, it's, it's in there, I don't know why we really need to talk about something so approved in, in that, so. That's what I've got on that, if you've got any questions, I'm sure, or Jerry can add a lot more to it.
You know, it's some non-controversial issues, and so, you know, like, uh, certain appointments may not be non, not, not, not be controversial, our appointments might be.
Right.
You know, um, and sometimes you just will be saying, you know, uh, I'm glad that these people, you know, applied, nobody else wants to take that, that on. And others, you know, you, there's a lot of demand to be on that, that particular board, and so, you know, you'll want, wanna talk about it. You, I think you guys will tweak it as you go along and simply say, you know, if you're not, if, if there's not any discussion about it. Is this something, you know, you wanna put in the consent agenda from now on? Um, a lot of people like, uh, Zoffa Springs reviews, uh, in their consent agenda, they even do their, the approval of, uh, uh, financial issues that are in the budget. And you just list them all in there, and if somebody wants to pull one out, they pull one out and the rest of it's approved, and then they talk about that one item.
Got it. Any, uh, questions or comments so far? Seeing none, I think it's a good idea, obviously try to streamline, clean up everything as much as possible. Um, so, I think you're heading in the right direction, I certainly appreciate it, um. Anything pops, do you need a, a vote from us to go that way, or?
No, I don't know, you know, that, your agenda is just something you guys formulate, we don't have any, we don't. Have anything that's code-wise in there, so it's just, if you guys don't like it, then we'll get rid of it, but if you wanna expand it, we'll expand it. You know, responsibly to where you think it needs to be, so it saves everybody time, you guys are not paid the big bucks for tuning, tuning this, so. You know, you wanna try and make it as efficient as possible.
Well, nine out of ten times, the mayor sees the agenda before it goes out anyways, when he's up seeing me, we talk about what's on there, so. He says, you know, I don't want that on there, it won't be on there, or anybody wants to pull it, but I think it would speed things up and. We'd have more time to talk about the things that are on the action agenda that do need to be talked about.
Yep, I agree. Well, having said that, uh, the rest of your city manager report, if you wanna get into that.
Um, yeah, you, the, after the tragedy, the young man being hit and killed by the train down there, the mayor got me and, you know, said, hey, let's. Can you look into seeing what we can do maybe to, you know, maybe this won't happen again, not that we can stop everything, but, um. So, uh, I reached out to, to Darren to find out exactly what happened down there and, um. They gave me the special agent's name, and then I remembered that deputy mayor had. Got a contact for, um, somebody at C S X that, on a different issue on, um, taking care of the railroad tracks and. Kind of filling in the potholes and that, but David Roberts and I, um, last week were able, or on the sixth, actually. Were able to, um, go on a Zoom type meeting with, uh, Peggy Smith, who's very nice, from C S X, she's. Crossing Safety and had an engineer on there, a very good meeting. And actually, I'm, I've got my notes here, I'm just reading some off, but, um, la- last year, every year, C S X and F dot, they get together and they go to. They look at, um, railroad crossings just so many a year, I don't know how many, say fifty or whatever, I don't know how many crews are out there looking at them. But last year in twenty-two, April twenty-two, they actually were Bell Street. And they were there when the school got out, and they said, whoa, look at all these kids, we need to have a pad gate, which is a pedestrian gate, that's just the arm that comes down over the sidewalk. So that's been in the works, and, um, the engineer told me the day we were talking that actually the construction, um. Phase, not the, but the funding for it had been approved, and there's some F dot money, um, section one thirty funds they found to do this. And I asked, he said, usually it takes nine to nine months to twelve months to actually get it done, once that's proved, but he said, I think this one's gonna be a little quicker. So, um, they did say that when they were there, and actually, um, Darren Hood told me, Major Hood told me the same thing. That a lot of these kids aren't even walking on sidewalk, which that isn't gonna stop them, so she said, you know, city could look at how you might be able to get the kids. In on a sidewalk, and I said, yeah, I got a few ideas, I'm gonna get with the school board and we're gonna. Talk between the sheriff's office, school board and the city that, you know, maybe we get that to work. And I asked him about Main Street, you know, which I told him that, you know, sidewalks are F dots, not ours, but. That looks like I could use them too, with, we have a lot of people on bikes and the scooters and walking and. People not paying attention, they said they looked at last year and they didn't think it would need it, but I asked him if they could look at it again, they said certainly. We then talked about, um, Pleasant and, uh, Lake Isis. And we told him how Pleasant isn't maintained very good, and actually David Roberts went out and said, the heck with it, you're not supposed to fill in. Um, any of those potholes within two feet, but it got so big there that he filled it in, they said, thank you. But they're gonna come out on ground here in the near future, meet with David and actually go to every one of these intersections and. Dave and I already talked about some other things, maybe even when they get the crossing arm down, things. Some things I pulled up, I look at Miami Dade back in twenty twelve, used a lot of money to put them all down there and, and they actually put stripes down. And those, um, those yellow cone things you see out on our sidewalks, they put them down, anything that might be able to stop pedestrians, so. It was a really good meeting, we've got, um, really good contacts with them now, I told them that I would be using them, Dave would be using them because it's very hard to get a hold of anybody at C S X.
Yeah.
But, uh, so, thank the deputy mayor there and using a elected official to help get that one, so I, I, I think it's, um, went really well. Kudos.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's wonderful, uh, you know, it's unfortunate that a tragedy had to happen, but, um, since it did and it got their attention, you might as well. Get as much good as you, as, out of it as you can for the rest of the citizens and make sure it doesn't happen again, so. It's a good deal. Anything else for the city manager report?
Nope.
Anything else for the good of the city? You got two hands up. You, you can make your way this direction, sir.
Uh, so come along, twenty-eight East Main Street, uh, Ivan Park.
Yep.
Um, I wanted to ask the attorney, um, so in May for our luncheon, we had the. Representative Tuck and also the, um, Senator Growl, they were both there, uh, presenting different aspects of this bill.
Okay.
Is a copy of what you have done as a summary, which was excellent, by the way, uh, they presented some of the items and not all of them. Available to the public or available to me at all?
Yeah, it's a book record.
I have a copy now if you want it, okay, great, thank you so much.
Yeah, um, just my ten cents a page, yeah. My, my caveat is that, you know, I did this very quickly and it's just a skim, you know, um, it's just.
In the, in the microphone, yeah.
Thanks.
If there's anything, yeah, is that good?
I was just gonna say, thank you, I'm familiar with some of it, not all of it, and, uh, your summary was great, so thank you.
This got all of them, it's even better.
Okay. Yes, sir, what do you got?
Yes, uh, there's an update on the, uh. All Lives Matter Victory March.
What's your name and address, sir?
I'm sorry, thank you.
Yes, sir, what you got for an update?
Uh, it was an update, uh. We're, we're simply, uh, would like to, uh, gather. At the Martin Luther King Complex, that's gonna be our starting point. It'll be Victory March honoring our first responders. The gathering, they will start about ten forty. So that's something about what you just might not be able to. And Ashley Carter, uh, is representing South Carolina State College with the George Floyd, uh, retiring in the Jersey. Um, with, with, uh, Paul McCaffrey, we're going to be contacting the first responders and other. Municipalities that have some emergency moves at this Victory March, thank you, any questions?
Did, did you end up getting the application done and all that?
Yes, we have, uh. Uh, with the march, uh, parade march around on here, nothing's changed, we haven't. Um, we're not asking anything new, we just wanna meet on the rest and, uh, the. Along with the King Complex and start a march.
Okay, staff, you wanna update on the process of the application there?
Yep. Spoke to Arnold earlier, he asked me to help him out on this, but. He, he was told last time to turn in exactly what he wanted and he, on. June ninth, he turned in the exact same one he had, which still shows, and he says I could just. Cross it out, but still shows about the alcohol and all this and using the Martin Luther King Complex, which I told you, Boys and Girls Club. Was against, well, I got a call. Fifteen minute call from Janice, the executive director. Very upset, her and Miss Anderson, because there's flyers out, which Arnold gave me one, it was in his packet. It says, Juneteenth events, eight A M, youth, youth basketball tournament at the Boys and Girls Club. Eleven thirty to one thirty, free food, keynote speakers, awards, one thirty, community program, two to two thirty. All Lives Matter Victory March, starting from M L K to Hopewell. Um, they were rather upset that these flyers were being put all around, they're all worried a bunch of people are gonna show up because. They, they have a bunch of kids there for summer camp, and they don't want a bunch of stuff going on there. And like I said, that was fifteen minutes, and she said, I will be there tonight, and I said, no, cause. Arnold's gonna get up and get his five minutes at the end, you don't need to sit through the whole meeting, so. You know, I say here, say I'd like to help Arnold out, but no, this isn't turned in right, Arnold did one, it, it isn't Arnold. He wanted it to be let in so they could get in and, and use the pavilion there in case it's raining at the ball field and, uh, and that, so. That's where we're at.
Okay, so they have no agreement with the Boys and Girls Club and they did not turn in an application to the city.
Not, not a proper one for, for that, and now the Boys and Girls Club adamantly does not want them there with all those kids there.
Okay. Well, Arnold, you hear that, I think you understand that, I just. That, that's what's on the application, but you, you filled it out.
I don't know, you, you understand, of course, that, that, those flyers that are going out, create, could create a problem for them over at Boys and Girls Club, can you, can you? Get new flyers?
It's your inability to follow the rules that's creating the problem, you understand that?
Well, I don't think.
Well, it's not a sanctioned event, you don't have closed roads, um, you have no authority to do so, so, I, I wouldn't do that.
Well, I mean, see, the exact question.
And I believe that the last meeting, we asked you to turn in an application.
The application is.
It's the same application you turned the last time, it has, it has a map on there, but that was on the last one.
Right.
But a- again, it's, the Boys and Girls Club was very upset today. And because in the last time you told me you had talked to Miss Anderson and had it all squared away, and I found out that wasn't true, so. Not against you, Arnold, but it's gotta be done the right way, and I certainly don't wanna cause problems at the Boys and Girls Club when they got a bunch of children over there.
Yep. All right, well, you've given your time, I appreciate it. Anything else for the good of the city? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.